Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. We're just bringing up the part of the budget that we're, the budget summary that we've been talking about here on the overhead. Where did we leave off at?
When I started with, just so the other board members can see where this data is coming from. On the first page of your proposed budget, you have a budget broken by, down by department codes. Your general education will be eleven hundred. Leave that special education, so on. This is the amount that's in our existing budget. This is the proposed, the change, the percentage. So I went back to Fun 10 and twenty-two, twenty-three and put in what we spent for each one of these categories. That equates to fourteen million, seven seventy-nine, five twenty-three, nineteen as a starting point. So I brought that. Fourteen, seven, seven, nine, five, five, twenty-three, nineteen. Down to the bottom is a beginning balance where we want to start. Whoops, excuse me. Because this is a twenty-two or a June twenty-three ending budget. July one of the following year. We had a custodian contract of thirty thousand. Four, ten. That went on top of this number. Twenty-four, twenty-five, which is the budget you're writing for. The custodian increase is twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five. Teachers' contract. Twenty-three, twenty-four was three hundred eighty, four twenty-eight, zero, zero. That was year one. The next contract that drops down to two eighty-five. Four forty-one. Here's some other liabilities that I knew was going up that we don't have numbers for yet. School resource officer was plugged in at one eighty-three, three nineteen. Mainstay, one twenty-five, five twenty-eight. And the school psychologist, one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Cheryl, I can email this to you when we fill it up so you don't have to. It makes it easier.
Mainstay is one twenty even, one twenty, five twenty instead of one twenty-five.
One-two-zero.
Oh, it is. One-two-zero. Okay.
So without filling in the blank lines, right now, as you stand, working up from that fourteen million dollar number, you're almost at sixteen million dollars right here. So I guess my question is, for a general increase in, in health insurance, overall district-wide, do we know what that number is?
Eight-point-two percent of. I don't have it totaled under health.
So again, I can email that. That can be filled in. That's going to bring us over, over sixteen million dollars. Do we know, other than percentage, do we have a fixed account of what our liability insurance is going up?
Yes.
Or, or a, a budget plus our increase on the liability? It's probably better stated.
Okay, so. Insurance for liability will be one-four-eight, nine-eight-five. But the increase is only nine-seven-four-seven total. Workers' comp and unemployment both went down. I can give you those numbers.
I'm sorry, it's one-four.
One-four-eight, nine-eight-five. Ninety-five. Yep. And then unemployment, sixteen, seven-nine-seven. And workers' comp, forty-eight, zero-nine-eight.
For the sake of budgeting, can we sum these? Come onto one line and then break them out? That's going to give you a general increase into your bottom line number. That makes sense.
The overall increase year-over-year for all three combined?
I don't need the increase. What I'm looking for is the, the budget number, including the increase. What are you going to plug into your budget for this next to cover those three lines?
Those are the new numbers.
Those are the three new numbers. So, yes, Tim, I believe, Mac, right? If we sum those, that's going to give us the total.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I get it.
Right?
Two-ten, four-thirty, one-seventy-four.
You had sixteen, one-fifty. Then you probably need your dental increase at a percentage. And the only other things I can think of, I'm not saying this is all-inclusive in your ESR because it's been a while. But YMCA, are you going to consider that data manager? Or if you're not going to do a data manager, do you have a grants manager in your new budget? Is that a number that you want to plug in there?
So can I speak to YMCA?
You sure can.
I'm just the entry guy, so.
No, I'm asking. I'm asking her. Sorry. Um, so I, I mean, I feel like YMCA has been great. I feel like it's wonderful. And I know this is not going to be popular by everyone out there listening, but YMCA is something above and beyond for childcare. Not everyone. I do not feel like it is something that we should fund in this budget. It has been great. We've been able to cover it with other funds and ESR, but. I mean, that's running out, so I do not think that it is appropriate to budget right now.
We subsidize it with ESR because we could.
Right, right, right.
We wish.
That, right, right. Yeah, agree. I, I mean, I think that that's how.
And I think if people, I mean, and then if, you know, other schools.
If there, or if there could be another grant out there that would cover that, and by all means, if we can, we will. And that's not to say that the YMCA program would go away.
There are other ways.
Us, the schools subsidizing it.
Correct, correct.
Would be no longer. Because that grant has run out.
So the other conversation with the YMCA, and it hasn't been utilized that much, but they have a floating scale on their tuition based on income.
Right.
So what normally might be sixty dollars, once they apply for that, brings it remarkably down.
Believe when we've had people signing up since ESR, since we've been using ESR to subsidize. I don't know as if they've even been filling that. Yeah.
Well, because what we were paying for students was lower than.
Right.
Than the dollar.
And again, this isn't anything against the YMCA program. I think it's amazing. It's wonderful. I just don't feel like the school, they should come out of the school budget to subsidize it.
Not right.
I mean, that doesn't mean that it can't still be held here and figure out other ways, so.
Well, yeah, I think.
Or plus. I mean, it's, it's your, it's your baby.
That was.
Could be a data manager slash grants manager.
Mac, do you know quickly, off the top of your head, what that was?
I don't think we've been.
YMCA.
We have, no.
No, no, no. Not one.
We, to my knowledge, did not have one budgeted in this, or well, in an unfilled position.
It was in Fund Twenty-two.
It's an unfilled position at the moment. The, the rate of the predecessor was twenty dollars and eighty cents an hour. That's a year-round position.
Not the power school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You can throw something.
Right.
Well, salary alone at that rate would be forty-three, six-eighty.
But what's the market rate? If you're going to, if you were thinking about going over to grants, and I'm only putting that out because of the conversations that have happened before, if you were going to make it a combined position, is that twenty dollars an hour a competitive rate in the market for a grants manager? I don't think it is. So.
Yeah.
So do you, do you budget for thirty, and then on top of the thirty, you're going to need your, your benefits plan, your FICA, et cetera? And, and again, Mac can crunch those numbers, but I'm looking to get the closest number ballpark so that he's going to have a realistic budget to deal with because you're. If your default is at sixteen-four, sixteen-five legitimately, once you decide on that number, you, you're slowly creeping up candid hand between those two numbers.
I just quickly looked up grants manager salary. So Manchester, New Hampshire, for example, I mean, much larger, obviously, is sixty-seven. It's the typical range on the low end.
About forty somewhere.
Yeah, typical range is sixty to seventy-three.
I would, I would think fifty grand would be a good.
That's an annual salary.
Oh, I thought we were talking rate per hour. Okay. Gosh. Yeah, and then benefit, I mean.
Are you talking fifty plus twenty-five thousand on the benefits package, Stacy, or? Because you're looking at medical and you're looking at FICA, you're looking at retirement?
Right, yeah. Probably closer to.
Sixty-eighty. I'm thinking your benefits are going to be at least fifteen percent. Seven-point-six-five. Maybe twenty percent, so. Would be for fifty?
Yeah.
Sixty-five.
What if they're married on a family plan?
Seventy-five.
We can't hire, we can't hire.
That looks good.
Wait a minute.
Seventy-five dollars? Oh.
No. Right? Didn't we say sixty-five or did we say seventy-five?
We did sixty-five.
Oh, that's true.
Tim, I, I have a good approximation on total cost of medical with, with the increase. I'm getting two million, seventy-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-two.
So how much of the?
Is the increase?
Yeah. Because that's already going to be in your budget, correct?
Yeah, let me get the eight percent of that.
Do you know what the increase was last year?
It was six percent, oh.
Over is probably, yeah.
And it's seven, what, this?
It's eight-point-two.
Eight-point-two.
So we're, we're going to want to account for that six and that eight percent increase because we're looking at June thirty, twenty-three ending.
Now. Why do we need to list both years of the custodians and teachers?
Increase is one forty-nine, eight sixty-four.
Someone has to explain it to me. I'm, I'm going to kick myself when you explain it.
Well, I had the re, I had it in my brain.
Let me try to.
That it was right, but now.
Because I.
What's that?
So we're heading right for your number.
So let me, let me explain this, Stacy. So we're starting off with the fourteen million, seven seventy-nine with what we spent as a June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. July one, we started a new fiscal year. So the custodian costs went up that year thirty thousand. And the teachers went up three hundred and eighty thousand. And in the budget you're going into now that you're writing for.
Is the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Is the twenty-four, twenty-five that you're also going up another contract increase.
But wouldn't we have budgeted that number from the?
Not when you're starting from the fourteen, seven, seventy-nine, five, twenty-three. That's a June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three number.
Yeah, he's correct. The original warrant was voted on, and then it's up to us to actually put that money into the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, the warrant says, yes, go ahead and do it.
Oh, okay, so that.
That's why it's separate.
Okay, now I get it. What else was there, though?
True, yeah.
Just the, just the, was there anything else on the warrant we have to take into consideration?
No, not, not on this one. In fact, we've got three hundred some odd, three hundred some odd dollars coming back from, we disbanded.
Yeah, I, I had it in my brain. Interventionists.
Right now, you're at sixteen, three seventy-five, oh sixty-nine. Now, I, I, I guess my question on the math and reading. And this, this is my ignorance. So I know at one time those positions could have been in Title One. But if I'm a non-special ed student, can I take advantage of that even though it's Title One money? Or is it restricted to?
It is restricted, so Title One, yeah. No, Title One is restricted.
I think four, it would have to be in four for.
Even if you're identified as a Title One school?
I don't know.
My point is that these two people that.
Oh, Title One, nope. Title Two, Title Two would be only.
This is kind of a weird thought, but could you be a disadvantaged child and also have special needs? I don't know. Could you fall under both?
Why not?
Well, I don't think it's been an issue if it's been ESR because they can work with anyone and everyone.
Right, yeah, that's, that's where, that's where I'm going with this is it's, it's. These interventionists for the last three years have been everybody. But with the title money, what are the restrictions placed on the district budgetary-wise, whereas does it turn into a special ed program for special ed students? Or potentially is it?
She's listening.
Available to everybody?
Well, if the title.
The Title One can cover it and the money's there. You can plug zeros in here. Or you can just be in the program or you can continue it. I mean, that's the board's choice.
The reason that we were able to be more global with those two positions because it was ESR. ESR was learning law.
Right.
It could have been valedictorian and he did math and interventionist.
Right.
If we refund these through Title One, then.
I'm pretty sure in order for Title One funds to be used, they have to support specifically identified students. Because you have to target, you need that data, so you have targeted students, so they're to work with those students.
Okay, so what?
So there's just.
What if we did a smaller number that would cover the interventionists that weren't entitled one, like, you know, throw a ten grand or fifteen grand. Could we fill that position? I don't know. But I'm saying if Title One covers the special needs kids, then maybe we could.
Right.
Well, typically intervention is used for your, for like your, your tier-two kids, and sometimes your tier-three kids. So your tier-one are the ones who are, are hitting the benchmark. Tier-two are on your cusp, so you want to get your tier-two up to your tier-one. So like, that's usually typically what your interventionist focus on, to get those shoes up to the ones, right? And then typically, if you're a target, if you're, if, if you're falling at that tier-three, most often times, it's so significant that those are already your special education students who are identified under special education, who are receiving their special education services through special education. However, sometimes, depending on how it is, they can receive that in addition.
But if your school, unless something's changed, if your school is identified as a Title One school, all children, I believe, are eligible for supplemental programming. I'm pretty sure. Unless something's changed.
Well, I guess, right? What's the point of being designated a school, right?
Right.
That's what I'm arguing now.
Yeah. Uh, approximate increase for dental, much different than medical. Two-six-oh-four, two thousand, six hundred and four dollars and fifty-five cents.
I like that.
He just sent it linked to.
Two-six-oh-four, yeah.
Two-six-oh-four?
Yes. Okay, and then questions about?
What was the change on that?
But if we put like ten or fifteen grand in those interventionists, like Mary had said, would that give us the latitude to use? That fifteen grand wouldn't be, you weren't thinking like fifteen grand hiring somebody?
But just the non-Titel One?
Okay.
Now?
So it would almost allow, if we could do that, it would allow us to use that same one person in, to do both.
It would probably be a payroll nightmare, like.
Right. What hours are you doing, right?
Could it be a?
Did we have interventionists before COVID?
Yes.
Okay.
Giselle said yes.
Yeah.
So we did, I'm pretty sure.
She did.
Giselle.
We did, I know we did. We did have, not, I don't, I don't think we had them at the high school level, but definitely value.
And Joel, you are right. I always think with Title Two. Title Two is more restricted. So Title One, it's a school-wide program as long as you're identified as a Title One school.
Okay.
And that's based on.
So.
So I guess my next question would be, what does your Title One allocation look like? Is there room in that Title One allocation to fit something like that in there, or is that right down to the penny?
Kathleen's pretty, uh, pretty savvy.
Because she's funding.
It's budgeted right down.
She's funding Paris and.
Right.
Right now.
Those interventionists out of that. Currently. She gave us that.
Two.
Oh, she handwrote it. I gave it to you.
Oh, that's right. Yep, she had them all listed out for you.
So.
She's got it pretty good. It's within three grand of being fully budgeted. And I think there's some people there we went through and we saw that they were already in Title.
What about a stipend position for after-school help if the kids needed it? I mean, is that an option?
Stipends are a smart way to go for incentives.
I believe that's what the grant manager position is. It's, it's not a salary position.
Yeah, I wouldn't imagine, I, I don't, I don't imagine a future post-ESR unless they just unleash a new wave of ESR-related grants where we need a full-time.
Right.
Position in any capacity. Colleen and Kathleen both do an excellent job with their respective areas, and they're more than capable of handling the grant writing for that. Of course, in the future, if those positions change, maybe we open the door and centralize that later, but that would be a lower-cost position because there's no ESR.
So am I hearing that the last two lines can be covered with Title One?
Yes.
But if she's.
If she's already down to the penny.
Right.
We have one interventionist under Title One already. Total cost to the grants. Just making sure the numbers look right. One-oh-five, six-eighty-one, eleven. To the Title One grant.
One-oh-five?
Health insurance. That's a, a fourth of that. And then.
Got it, okay. So that wasn't just sorry, that's to cover everything.
Exactly. FICA, retirement, yep, got it. And it looks like a seasoned employee as well, years of, twenty-two years of service.
Oh, no.
I guess our presentation's over.
No, that, that was very helpful.
Yeah, we need to be all looking at the same thing.
Yeah.
I was, I had different screens and stuff that we shared.
Yeah.
Some, but.
Is it recording? There used to be a box. There used to be a box over there.
Can bring that up.
I can probably reach the one on the wall. I don't have it that long.
And I don't think we have the other interventionist. Is that, so we're just talking about putting the position in, keeping it?
Yeah, I don't know.
We're supposed to have a math one, and I don't think that we do.
I know we don't at the high school.
Uh, maybe.
But I don't know. I think Henry Wilson, there is.
They've got a box over there, too.
I do have that written down.
Okay. We have.
The math interventionist was assigned at the high school.
Maybe that's what it is.
What was that?
There's one each.
We do have an interventionist at the high school. It doesn't say which, what this person does.
It's now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't fill it.
Yeah.
If we had that, we would have probably shipped him to middle school.
Yeah.
It's our younger.
Yes.
Now.
That's where it should be.
Jim, when you say ESR, what did you just say?
Yeah.
ESR funding?
Third round, which must be obligated by September twenty-twenty-four, states, states have until January, January twenty-twenty-five to liquidate their funds. And those with approved extensions have until March twenty-twenty-six. So I guess my question is, what, why, where is this January twenty-twenty-five to liquidate funds coming?
Those are.
That's a new one.
Those.
It is, because last week I got, what, I'm sorry.
Those are your physical projects that can't close because of your construction. You were allowed to.
That's up on the screen. It's currently not filled.
The one that's on the screen is filled at the, at the middle school.
No.
But the math one is that the high school never got.
Never got filled.
Yeah.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
So.
Until now.
It is, we do have confirmation that we are paying, well, ESR is paying for currently a math interventionist and a reading interventionist at Henry Wilson. Both, correct?
Wait a minute now. If we have a math interventionist at Henry Wilson, why is that person not teaching middle school math when we have a vacancy?
I don't. I think we just have a math teacher. I don't think we have.
Well, no, we, we've got him in some grade levels, but my, I don't think there's a, a math interventionist. Is, Giselle, if you're watching, can you just please?
I can, I can, I can give you her name.
No, I'm saying we did.
I could do that, too.
Yes.
Oh, so that's at the low, that's.
That's the one.
That's that break in.
Correct.
Your four-through-six school.
But that, but that is coming out of ESR currently, or was that Title One?
Title One.
That's Title One.
Correct, yes.
So right now.
We checked that the other night, and it was ESR.
Okay, so there's a behavior interventionist, there's an intervention, interventionalist, a high school.
Hold on, I just have to clarify because it's interventionist.
Interventionist, thank you.
I'm sorry, you've been bothering me for like months now.
Adding Ls to everything.
I know.
Taking away Rs and adding Ls. It's fine, it's in English.
You're not the only one, Matt. Sorry.
It's all right. We all took our cause here, no.
Love you all. I promised people at home I would speak up today and say that.
Fight for the people, Nicole. That's why, that's why, that's why we count on you.
All right, um, I just want to make, I just want to make sure because again, we've gone back and forth about this, and so.
Is there a way to discuss names?
No.
No.
That would, that would help.
No, it's fine. I mean, I get it now. I get why it'd make, that would make sense why we wouldn't take that person.
Right, and put it in that.
So she's the one in Title One.
She stayed out of ESR. She slaughtered it. She stayed out of Esser, she slotted it.
I think she got it.
I got you, okay.
The person was positive, was originally Title I.
Right.
And then to say budget, well, we'll, we'll have to come back.
Was previously Title I, absolutely.
But.
But now.
I'm ninety-nine percent positive that that moved over there because it wasn't allowed.
Right.
Right. And, and I.
Brand versus the other.
Right.
And I, I sat on the beginning of that committee and she was slotted for that position. So she, we, we should have been receiving reimbursed, well, we can't get both.
And I think when we, I, I think when we started using Esser to fund the interventionists. I think our intention was to have them help us through learning loss and that we wouldn't need them after the fact. So it wouldn't have been a burden on the budget at this point in time.
That's why I asked if we had them before.
Right, no, I know, but, so I think that that, because, Joel, what did you just ask me?
It's just really unfortunate because interventionists are critical, like, that's what.
I said we may have.
Oh.
I mean, hindsight's twenty-twenty.
So it was supposed to be math interventionists for high school to assist students who are struggling in math to address learning loss and prove.
But we didn't, we didn't fill that, so we don't need to worry about that one.
Okay.
An interventionist really should be, I mean, all great, yes, it would be wonderful, but really should be targeted at primarily Valley View and then middle school. Not saying high school's not important, but.
The younger, right?
Learning loss coming out of COVID.
If it's, right.
But the, right, the younger you.
And that we wouldn't have to fund it.
We've got numbers.
Did you want zeros, are you thinking of zeros or?
No, well, one of them.
We haven't had it.
One of, one of them we haven't had, so we can't make an argument that it made a difference.
Right. Are these two in our private, um, chat that our superintendent doesn't need just send to us? Did you get this?
I.
I don't know.
Mac, are those, are both of those individuals being paid out of Esser currently?
Who is that other?
He's been busy there.
Do you recognize this name?
Giselle's not watching today. She can't be.
Maybe I can text her.
Well, I was, but I.
I don't have them. She's away. I don't even have the name on my list, that's fine. What was the first? You said it. Oh, that's because it was not put incorrectly, okay. Okay. So this is a reading intervent. Okay.
Then I guess my last question would be, in the proposed budget that you guys reviewed.
It says Title I for him, Title I.
For both?
For both. I'm checking to confirm.
In the proposed budget that you guys reviewed, is there anything in that budget on top of these numbers that are half to halves?
B SRO's in that?
Yeah, B SRO's in here.
Oh, it's above.
Uh, you could argue the course reimbursement. You don't, only because they did a survey, but you could also argue against it.
I think you got one now, maybe two in course reimbursement?
Well, and administrators already confirmed that the men were here. They wouldn't be taking any, to just not add what was originally proposed.
Course reimbursement line is significantly added to.
The recharge. Four hundred and thirty-eight thousand for global staff or. Someone to have the money on.
In the, in the default, typically it's twenty-eight thousand, one building, thirty thousand on the other building.
Now, if I was going to build a default budget, we'd start at my, this year's appropriation.
Right.
And then I'd look at all these cost of living increases that we just put in, in this sheet, and I would add to that, and you get a pretty good default budget that's legitimate to defend. There's no time, no one-time expenditures in your existing budget, and there's no warrant articles that have to come out. So you got a solid sixteen million dollar starting point, you got a pretty significant medical increase, you got a pretty significant contractual liability, you got a significant, you, you don't need to. I don't think you need to go too much beyond that.
Well, I think one is definitely Title I, right?
Yeah, one is definitely Title I, I think they, they're both in Title I.
Do you have that piece of paper that, um, Kathleen gave us last week?
I, I did find them, they, they were not, they were.
Gave us, they.
The name was spelled differently.
Okay, so, so one is abs, so.
Yes, you're right.
Yes, math, uh, no, 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 not math, reading.
Reading.
Is Title I.
Is, right?
About to confirm?
No, I, I'm, this is from Kathleen, this is from Kathleen, this one's being paid out of Title I.
Correct.
So.
The reading would be zero.
Is this reading?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
So reading is zero, or a dollar, whatever you want to put in there.
Right.
You probably could have all of that if we need to to next year, right?
Okay.
I mean, so now it's just talking about the other one and whether or not.
I'm ninety-nine point nine.
But when they're, when they're filling I, out the Title I grant, and I wish Kathleen was here, it's okay that you're not Kathleen, um.
I can bring it up, yeah.
When they're filling that out, and maybe Jim, you can help me, help us. And they're going over that proposed, that proposal. They can add this in and give reasoning and verification why to allocate for that money. Right now, Kathleen spent just about all and has done a good job with it because that's all she left for, she didn't take into consideration these other positions because she didn't need to because they were being filled with Esser, through Esser. So writing the proposal for Title I for the next school year.
Should include.
Should include and the reason why and the data, and we have the data and we have the findings. Correct?
We don't need to check.
Right, exactly.
Especially since it was previously Title I.
Correct, so I'm good with both being zeros.
Right, because I mean, it's, it has to involve.
Right.
For that Title I, in order to improve that academic achievement. And it, to be a school-wide program.
Right.
I mean, it's going to involve conducting comprehensive needs assessment, creating a school-wide plan, all of that, so if you're creating all of that. I don't know, I, I just want to make sure, I, because I don't know enough, I know a little bit, but not enough behind it, so I just want to make sure, is that something that?
No.
We write into it, or does the state just say, this is all we're giving you? You know what I mean?
We do budget it ourselves.
Okay.
Yes, they give us an allocation and we budget that allocation out, yeah, you're correct.
The other thing we talked about at one of our meetings was moving a lot of supplies for the upcoming year.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Spending now, so, I don't have a total on.
They put it in the budget.
Yeah, about it, we.
But if you.
It was, it was an overlay.
If you buy right this year.
Right.
You're gonna be good. The other thing I just put in there because I thought about it that we didn't compensate for was the non-union raises, so typically in, in that fourteen million dollar budget, there would have been an eighty, eighty thousand dollar line for non-union raises.
Right.
But with the money spent, I don't think we accounted for the two percent. So you're gonna need a two, usually you do a standard two percent non-union, and then you do merit raises from that eighty pot pool, this is a number, Mac, that you're gonna have to calculate. But it may be another area you want to think about exploring because I think we need to plug that in.
That's, is that where the salary scales is coming?
Yeah, it's this guy right here, non-negotiated increases district-wide, uh, it was budgeted eighty, I raised it two percent to eighty-one-six in the proposal that we have. But that, yeah, I see.
But the, but the eighty, let, let's call it eighty-two thousand, the eighty-two thousand is your merit portion of that. Typically, what passports have done, and it's up to this board, whatever they want to do, typically, non-union employees get a two percent raise. And then that eighty thousand is used for merit on top of the two percent raise, but that's a board decision of how they want to go funding.
Okay, yeah. Okay.
All right, so.
But you wouldn't if it's, if it's a brand.
Right, I just want to make sure. I want everyone listening and everyone to know that interventionists are critical, they are so important, especially in our district. So I understand one of them is currently in Title I, so okay, that's fine, I just want to make sure that that math interventionist.
I texted two people trying to get an answer.
Kathleen is probably.
Is going. I mean, it's critical, it's.
Oh, absolutely.
Especially given our student population. And how amazing.
The other thing is the, the performance, the performance of how, how Giselle, and I'll say Giselle, how Giselle and Kathleen took ownership of the program, motivated that school, and that school worked as a team, and.
Oh, motivated the staff, is that, yeah.
Yeah, and it.
The stuff they're doing is incredible, amazing.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm saying I just. Putting that at there, I just want to make sure.
Well, I mean, putting it at. This is just getting us to the number, I mean. It's not to say that we wouldn't have one, it would just be funded.
Well, yeah, I mean, if you can't, because you can't, if you can't fill all five of your teacher spots anyways, you're probably gonna need other forms of help, I see your point.
Um.
So within that fourteen million dollars right now, not that you don't want to fill it, but there's an open guidance concern that if you had to pull money from and you couldn't, knew you couldn't fill it, you can move money between lines.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
So can we make a plan of how we're going to get this budget? Or settle on a number for Wednesday?
Yeah, because I'll take whatever I get and I'll have it back to you like tomorrow.
So I mean, that default budget. Uh, call it sixteen-four.
We're talking penny.
Huh, right, well, right, so I mean, that, that would be the number that we're trying to get to for the default. And then, right, right, right. Um. So sixteen-four for the default, and then.
Yeah, that's.
But that wasn't including the non, right.
So if you, if you start at.
Did we?
You start at your sixteen million dollars. And you're gonna plug in whatever that sixteen million dollar budget is of this year's budget, on top of that, you're gonna add in a hundred and forty-nine eight seventy-four in insurance. Two hundred and ten thousand four thirty-one for your liability increase. Twenty-six oh four fifty-five for your dental insurance. And I think that's all out of there that you're gonna be able to get, but I still, I, I didn't crunch the numbers, but I still think the default is over the sixteen-three seventy-seven, but you're close. The one benefit you have with them being close is you advocate with the public that a default budget means we lose our SRO program. And.
Right.
Yeah, according to Kathleen, the math interventionist is, is an Esser.
Math.
No, she said, she said Mac, not Mac.
Yeah, Mac.
That's what we've been saying, math interventionist.
No, I know, but when he said that, he thought you were talking to him.
Oh, but, yeah, that's what we've been saying, math is Esser, oh.
It was like your mother said it.
It was, that's how highly I respect you guys.
Our reading, we knew the title one it said.
Right.
Was Title I, so, yep, okay.
That's weird, okay, that's.
I mean, one position makes me feel better than two, but.
So.
Okay, so it's in Esser, it needs to come back into the budget.
Mm-hmm.
So, so is that a hundred and ten?
Right, what, what does?
I have that right, as soon as it finishes loading.
But you think it can be written in?
But I'm wondering if it can be written into Title I, that's what I'm saying, so if it was previously always Title I.
Hmm. Uh, it would be one oh five, six eighty-one. Total cost.
And just like that, we're at sixteen-four, okay, sixteen.
That's about as close to a level funded.
Right. That we're gonna.
Last year was like sixteen oh one, this is sixteen four oh.
Right.
Well, she just texted me that answer.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Ask her if she.
Um.
Feels, if though connection with these positions could, with, at that position, that one position could be Title I funded.
I think non-union is already in.
The budget? I do too.
It's, it's, it's not, because you're starting at the fourteen million dollar number.
Oh, right.
And moving up from there.
Starting at ten.
Right.
Right.
So what was that number, it was like eight, eighty-something?
Eighty last year.
It's, it's gonna be two percent calculation of where they are now, if you're giving a two percent across the board, and then it's gonna be eighty thousand on top of that. Which is, which is another reason why you may want to think about, can the math interventionist be moved to Title I?
So if it's. So she's probably gonna respond somewhere along the lines that eh, eh, ninety percent of that Title I budget is already salaries, so we'd have to take someone else out to plug in. Can we accomplish it? Yes, I think we can.
Well, yeah, but if you take someone out, they're going in.
Well, if you.
Right, right.
Yeah, they're no longer a, uh, Title I, whatever they were.
Right. Um.
All those positions.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, all the Title I, you mean all the Title I?
All the ones.
Which is, yeah. Um, I guess my only other thing, and Mary had brought up, but we had talked about just the course reimbursement decreasing.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Because that was budgeted on, based on fifty-seven courses, because the CBA says six credit, which equals two courses each. And I know some of the administrators are like. Like, not everyone is.
Right.
Only contractually obligated, David, if everybody said, all the people said, I want to take two.
We are, yes, we are. And I think that that's.
With people in a CBA.
Right. And I think that that's where that number came from, and that's why it's so large.
Right, but like, that's, I mean.
Historically, that's not even close to what we spent.
Twenty-six thousand dollar increase just at one school. I mean, the forty-seven hundred, okay, and then, oh, you know, like. Like thirty-eight thousand, I mean, I. Dollars, but.
I went surveys, but surveys.
Right.
And answers and follow through and do ways.
Are all very different.
Yeah, and a course is a different responsibility than.
Right.
Other things, I mean, that's after work, that's after, you know, that's. And you have to guarantee the grade and. So there's work to do.
Again, it's. You know, we're talking like thirty-eight.
I mean, that's true too, someone could.
Yeah, we're talking forty-four thousand. Out of a. Sixteen. Almost five. But, I don't know.
Okay, so if we use sixteen, whatever this number is, sixteen.
Forty-three, thirty-five.
As the default.
No, this is, this is a budget.
I mean, propose, sorry, sorry, thank you.
But that's gonna go up based on your non-union raises.
That's gonna, I didn't hear you what.
That's gonna go up based on your non-union raises.
Right. So that's eighty plus.
Well, that depends on. What we're paying our drivers, tech, secretaries, admins.
Right.
They've already been calculated. This is a pool that is based somebody.
Hmm.
By merit.
But they're not calculated at two percent in here, Mary, because we're based on spent. They are calculated at two percent in the proposed.
Different line of thought, he looks.
He knows that.
Said you're gonna start with Ben.
So, what, what's the percentage increase for the teachers on that second year?
Two percent.
Then why would we budget, why would we budget about two percent?
We didn't for the teachers.
No, no.
For non.
Right. I would, I mean, yeah, right, we're not gonna give everyone else three percent, yeah. Is that what you're saying?
I, you won't ever see me supported.
Yeah, right, no, I agree with you.
Never.
I wouldn't even want to take a raise.
I don't, I mean, and when, when Tim was on the board with me, we disagreed on merit, and that's how I am. But, um, it's just this.
I mean, I think. For where we are at this present, I mean. Where we are right now in getting to a number. I think we have no choice but to use two percent.
What, what is the merit process?
We don't.
There isn't a process.
No, there, there is, that's right.
Okay.
It's not written anywhere, and that's where it starts getting muddy. Um.
I got you, okay.
Yeah, it was just a. Discussion on to where we could go should. The. Feeling arise.
They can follow the town.
Right.
If they have to. They're. Aggressively trying to do everything for merit. They've done, they have people involved as well.
Mm-hmm.
They did basically the same thing, you should have a pool.
Right.
If nobody exceeded what they were, then the money goes back to the taxpayers.
Right.
I think there's any number as well they have.
Do they have a process? Because I was on the board of selectmen when they were doing that, there wasn't a process then.
There is no.
Again, that was many years ago.
There's evaluations now.
Yes, there are. I do know that.
Do they ask the taxpayers? I've never got one. Just saying, who's filling them out, your buddies?
That's a good one.
I'm gonna get. Targeting for selling that.
Um, okay, so. We have a default budget number of. Sixteen. Four sixteen-five, right?
The budget, well.
Oh, that's where it should be, it shouldn't say we have a number, it should be around that number. If our proposed budget is sixteen. Let's call it sixteen-six. With non-union raises in there. Can we work with that?
So let me, let me be clear on the default, I express my opinion of the default. Default budget is set by the board.
Right.
Period. So.
No, I'm saying like that is a number that is workable, the sixteen-four sixteen-five number.
Do you, do you think there's any chance that mainstay sneaks into the default here? Do you think that's justifiable?
I don't because of the way, I, you know. Putting the default on the budget challenge, no. God forbid they pass a default budget. Somebody file in. A motion in court to stop that hundred thousand dollars, yeah, that could happen.
Well, what if, I mean, we're using mainstay. To replace. The. IT director, which was always in the default budget. So.
Is there any?
It's the same, and frankly, I mean, about the same dollar amount.
Is there any educational standard in the DOE rules?
That you have to have.
That you have to have minimum IT. Equipment or specifications?
Yeah, okay.
I mean.
You have to answer that question, okay.
I mean, the other thing is, is does your heating system. Is your heating system controlled by IT, because if it is. It becomes a life safety issue and a requirement, which then it's allowed to go into the default budget. But putting them in there just under that contractual is gray here. But there's, if there's an educational rule or a life safety issue, then yeah, it becomes allowable under the default regulations.
So it's a gamble unless you know.
Well, you definitely can make an argument for safety.
Right.
If your.
If it's.
If what?
If your system that.
Controlled by IT.
Or.
Your, your security systems are.
Right.
Talking about cybersecurity.
Yeah.
Cyber, cyber security and.
Security.
Yeah, fraud.
Coming, I mean, the children who are on, using it and.
Yeah.
At our security systems, so.
And I would, I mean, I would assume, I mean, I don't know, but I would assume part of our heating systems.
It is.
Reliant on.
It's remote control, yeah.
Wifi type.
Yep, it's remote control.
Hmm.
Yep. And our light, lighting, yep.
This time of year is.
Well. If you have a buy it, they maintain your active shooter program.
I, that was, that was my next one, yeah.
Um. Okay, can we move forward with?
Can you give me the salary benefit amount for, what was that? Uh, sorry, I'm looking at.
The math interventionist?
Yeah, what is that, one oh five?
One oh five.
One oh five, sixty-one.
Yeah, the one oh five.
Ah, okay, great. Okay.
Um, are you comfortable?
I'm, yeah.
Do with Mary.
Did we decide on that, on leaving, putting it to zero?
No, I think we're, I plugged in eighty thousand plus.
I think, I think Mac has to calculate a two percent increase for all non-union rate and plug in that gross number there. And then work that into his. Account codes as he goes, goes through.
Right, so, so.
It, it shouldn't be that huge of a number because a lot of our. Workers on non-union, we've got our bus drivers, our tech, our secretaries. Some of our administrative secretaries, I mean, it's not a big pool.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I have a good idea. The pool needs to go right in there.
The spreadsheet you did, you should be able to like color code everybody. And then export those to inventory spreadsheet and then get it in the box, you know, if you have. Suzie and Judy and these are all, they're all admin, you color them all. Fully.
Right.
And then you have your tech people, but they're all getting pretty, and you export that way. Once you identify where they are, then you export them thirty-two percent.
We call.
Yeah, yeah.
And that'll be your number.
Is that money above the two percent that we call. Yeah. Merit pool. Allow us to hire a replacement for somebody at a higher rate if they come in with more experience?
Mm-hmm. We've, we've done that, we've also done wage studies and moved people up with that money in the past too.
Right. That's, maybe we do need some of that. I mean, I don't know if anyone leaves it, but you know, just.
Somebody might fall out of the staff.
Right, could be.
Perfect, yeah.
Right.
Can we just put a number in there right now, so, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Five past nine, so I'd like to just, instead of talking about this for another half hour.
I want to go to bed.
I'm just waiting for.
A rough estimate in there?
That's what.
So we have a more accurate number for Wednesday, that way for everyone.
We might be able to adjust that math number too.
Um, question. Are the, the, the specialists? So speech pathology in that realm, like I have speech assistants.
Oh.
Non-union, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We didn't put, did we put, we didn't put, uh, speech assistant.
Back in?
That, that should be up there too. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Was speech in the original. Fund ten from twenty-two twenty-three.
We just moved one into Essar, we, we're paying one speech, not the, that we're paying one, the assistant.
Yeah, we have one assistant and two pathologists, I believe.
No, I think we have one pathologist.
Two assistants, yeah, okay, yeah.
And one is being paid out of Essar, so we do need to move that one back. I do believe.
So it's speech?
Yeah, I see her.
When you say one and two, what did you mean by that?
We. One assistant?
One is.
You're correct, Stacey.
We have two, two speech assistants and one speech pathologist. And one of the. Speech assistants.
When you say that, you mean in general for the district? Or in Essar?
No, no, not, altogether, the only.
We had two speech pathologists.
We, we do have, we have two of each, I believe. One assistant, one and two a grant.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, what?
Because we hired one this year.
I hear you, I know, it's gotten like, oh.
Hold on.
Um, all I know is.
We hired a pathologist this summer. Because I, I was, I was the one that.
Yeah, correct.
And, but the, on the interview team was the other pathologist.
Okay, well, either way, the only one we're. Over here. Okay, yes, yes. Um, right, but those are. And there are, so the only thing.
Yeah, those are already much.
Yeah.
The pathologist is already in the bunch, right, right.
The only thing we need to pull out.
One was if we had two, and then the other one.
The only thing we need to put back in is one assistant.
One assistant, I have an Essar, yes, correct.
Can you give me the number on that?
And total cost of that grant. Uh, five-eight-six-five-six.
Five, five-eight, what?
Six-five-six.
Yep.
Kathleen is saying that no, there's not enough. Money left from that allocation to cover the interventionist.
For next year though, she's already spent next?
She would have spent through September thirtieth, I believe. That's it.
There's only sixteen-nine-sixes left, six-six left from the allocation.
That's for the current year we're in.
For instructional resources and family engagement.
It, yeah, I, I see, I know what you're saying, we get a new one every year.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I would assume she probably plans.
Percentage, right, poverty?
Yeah, it, it's based on.
Like that allocation.
Exactly, yeah, the allocation could change. Uh, if we don't spend our full allocation this year, part of that may even get rolled over. Uh, so on and so forth, so there's different ways that title one can change. Um, so it's usually something they sit, they sit down and budget out every year.
Tim, can you put eighty grand in the non-union raise line just for a placeholder?
Placeholder?
Please?
Is that one oh five for that math interventionist accurately?
Yeah, that's with benefits and.
All in.
Medical.
Costs to district.
Like, uh, everything. Um.
So it's sixteen million, six-twenty-two, zero-one-one, forty-eight. So you're gonna need a default budget higher than that.
The default budget I have, that I've been updating as we've talked. Comes pretty darn close to that if I take out mainstay, if mainstay can stay in.
I think you're making, you can make the argument with mainstay and your life safety.
So if that's the case, I, I have to go back through the numbers. So if that's the case, I get a default of sixteen-seven-ninety-six. And I, that may come down a little bit more. But I, I think it'll stay above the sixteen-six. Yes. I think that's pretty spot on, but you had estimated yourself then.
Okay, so. Sixteen-six for a default? I mean, propose, I'm sorry.
You get one more thing wrong. No merit. No merit.
So sixteen-six proposed. Default.
Sixteen, sixteen-seven.
Seven. Make it happen, Mac, let's see it, moving on.
Well, tomorrow you will get an update from me on that.
The only, the only other thing that I can see, that's these. Now that you have budget numbers of crime, start looking at all of your revenue numbers.
Yeah.
Add a receipt about the other day. Is, once you get in front of the budget, the first, first question is gonna be, is it gonna be a tax?
There is gonna be a tax impact on this. Because we went from spending. Fourteen-point-five million dollars or fourteen-point-eight million dollars, whatever number you want to pick. And now we're gonna be spending most of the sixteen million dollar.
Right.
So even though we started around the same point. There is gonna be an impact. Um, and it's, it's gonna be a pretty good hike. And again, looking at the MS twenty-five. If you return everything out of there that can possibly be returned. Your tax rate is gonna go down. We're gonna end ESR with an appropriation that's gonna bring that tax rate back up. But we're gonna be no worse than we're sitting right now.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
So I can talk to the DR, DRA and DOE tomorrow, after they have a chance to just speak with each other.
Okay.
Uh, and I'll negotiate, I can negotiate that out.
Okay.
So one of the things on those lines for retained fund balance with a five hundred thousand dollars is. I believe that's your five percent figure that the board voted on. The other thing that. It's either on the DOE twenty-five or it's at tax rating. This board voted to retain for the sprinkler system, so it was two hundred and somewhat thousand. As a contingency fund, because the sprinklers happened after they passed their budget. But the other thing you gotta watch for is, last year, the board voted to retain a hundred thousand. So that hundred thousand. Rolls over this year. So you're really only appropriating a hundred thousand. But what you're gonna hear from DOE and DRA. Is, yeah, the most you can have in that retained fund balance is about three hundred and fifty thousand, because you only can retain five percent of what, the local taxes.
Net evaluation.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we are, they had said it would be, you're, 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 you were, they were thinking around four hundred thousand, but they actually. Said that they got their initial calculation wrong, so that's kind of what the whole phone call thing was about, but. They didn't take out the grants from that valuation, so. Um, so. So do they, so would that mean that this board has to vote to retain that money again or release it?
They voted to retain. The contingency.
Mm-hmm. Which was one hundred.
The one hundred, and then he took a second vote to cover the sprinkler system.
Which is the, maybe the encumbrance.
Well, no, because we were using, um, trust funds.
You're gonna use CRFs, and then when you saw your fund balance. The board took an official vote.
Right, to use fund balance.
Two hundred and something thousand dollars towards the sprinkler system. Now, this is gonna be a tight budget. Because you're losing.
Right.
A lot of capital. One thing you might want to think about is, if you've got two million dollars potentially coming back. Do you want to retain the max as contingency, so that if something happens, you have a pool to go?
Right. That makes sense.
And we should probably bank on something happening, given the lifespan of our infrastructure is at or beyond.
Right.
What was it, we were out one day last week, and we're getting pictures of the buckets everywhere that they're, they're putting out.
Yeah, walk in the hallway of the Henry Wilson Middle School, and you'll see all the water stains on the ceiling.
Okay, well, we have our numbers. Um.
Thank you, Cam, for setting that time aside, I appreciate it.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday.
Okay.
Thank God, okay.
Right.
With the proposed budget norm.
They, yeah.
The proposed budget normally goes into Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Right.
So, so, so I thought it was the intent of the board to send the proposed for Wednesday night.
Yes, it was.
It was, it was, yes.
Tam, are you, are you able to?
Give us another week.
I'm gonna do it right now.
Thank you.
I'll send it to her. Stacy, can you put it out if I send it to you, because I don't have all the.
What was that, I'm sorry?
I'm gonna send the finish to you.
I will disperse.
And I'll see if I have, if I have Cheryl on my email, I don't know what I do, but.
Um, so our next meeting will be December fourth, next week. I think we have some manifests, and I will make a motion to go into non-public session one under RSA ninety-one A three two ABC nominations and resignations.[1788.54]